... certified. I do agree on the first stance, I'm not changing. Under God, in the principle of other than justice.
This is, uh, July 15th, depot bay council meeting. And, uh, it's a little bit late, seven minutes past or something like that. But, uh, call, call work please.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Wiseman?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Mathelah?
Here.
Grant?
Aye.
Approve the minutes for July 5th.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 15th.
Send it. Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
And, okay, I'll be able to.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, Council's table has presented.
Call please.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Abstain from everything.
Now, Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Number five, special order is a presentation, Michelle went on Lincoln County District Attorney's Office.
How can I be of the evening? Hello?
Leave your name and address.
Certainly. Michelle Brown, Lincoln County DA's office. I called up here a while ago to see if I can get placed on the agenda. I won't keep you for very long. I did want to introduce myself, I have some business cards with me, answer any questions that you may have. I've been the elected DA for about two years now. I've been to depot bay on crime callouts, but I've never actually been up here sort of proactively to introduce myself, to talk a little bit about my philosophy on prosecution and how I approach cases and my office. And then I also wanted to talk to you folks about, maybe some feedback about my office, if you've had any interactions with it. I think even in meetings, I've only had an opportunity to meet Mayor Mencia and Mr. Gambino. So, again, here just to introduce myself and are the name tags in front of the council correct? Excellent.
Oh, almost.
I don't know.
Is that right, the mayor, Mr. Mayor? We need to swap Johnson with Mayor.
Got it.
Oh, have a rep, Mayor Johnson, alright, thanks. That's gone.
I produce and brought crime stats. I'm told in the past that that's a pretty boring presentation and without any context, it's, it can be meaningless. One of the struggles that my office has is between 2014 and 2015, most areas of, of crime, Lincoln County has increased between seven and fourteen percent. We don't have, you know, have the actual statutes written out. Most of the crimes that we're seeing increase are either DUI or crash-related crimes, or we also have a pretty high increase in theft and robbery type crimes. Things that have gone down in Lincoln County are crimes of domestic violence. I say only the, the crimes in my office that we file on. I'm not here to suggest that domestic violence has been reduced in any way, hopefully it has, but I'm telling you what I know about the violence in my office. So that's an area that has gone down, as well as child sex abuse cases are also, from the 2014 to 2015 reporting year, have been reduced. Like I said, I've got Saks Act of Statistics, if you'd like me to go through them, but if you have any questions about my office or me personally, this is, I just wanted to come and introduce myself. Yes.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So when you say reduced, uh, across the board basically is what I'm hearing, did you say property crimes have gone down?
No, no. The only two categories that I see that have gone down are crimes of domestic violence and child sex abuse crimes. The other categories have all been increased between seven and fourteen percent.
And, uh, so, uh, is it statistically significant? Is it by five percent, ten percent?
I can give you the numbers, I don't have the percentage. So burglaries went from, these were big home burglaries, things were, or businesses. In 2014, there were seventy-nine filed in my office, 2015, there were a hundred and eight filed. DUI specifically, 2014, we had two hundred and forty-six, in 2015, two hundred and eighty-nine were filed.
Well, no, but, I'm sorry, I specifically wanted to know where the, the two crimes, domestic violence and what else that went down?
Uh, child sex abuse crimes went down.
Okay, so how, where did they go down from?
So in 2014, crimes involving domestic violence, we had three hundred and fifty-one filings. In 2015, we had three hundred and sixteen filings. And child sex abuse, 2014, we had a hundred and eleven filings, in 2015, we had sixty-eight.
Fifty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty. Well, that's.
I think so.
Um, I just had a couple of questions. When you say burglaries, does, what scope of crimes does that actually include? I mean, we've all heard the term, but I think.
Sure. There are dwelling burglaries, those would be burglary in the first degree, and then your businesses or outbuildings or garages. And those would be burglaries second degree, they're both felonies. And so anyone entering a dwelling with the intent to commit a crime, that's an eighth felony. Uh, the businesses or outbuildings or garages, that's a speed felony. You still have to enter with the intent to commit a crime. So it could be any crime. My statistics have them all bunched together, so I can't separate the two out.
That's what I was wondering, because I, I know that, well, let me just put it this way, is, where would shoplifting fall in that?
That's not a burglary.
That's not a burglary. What, what, what would that fall under the category of?
It would be theft and then the dollar amount would determine what level of theft it would be. Theft in the third degree is one hundred dollars or less. Theft in the second degree is one hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, or a thousand dollars or higher, in the first grade, which would make it a felony.
Okay, so that wouldn't be included in that statistic?
Not included at all.
Okay, so could you tell me which, what statistic it would be included under then?
We have a category of theft in general.
Ah, okay, thank you.
In 2014, there were four hundred and seventy-three reported, filed thefts in my office. And this is actually statistically significant as well. In 2015, there were three hundred and eighty-seven.
And that was countywide, right?
Countywide.
Okay.
My database has no way to parse out districts. I'm working on that. And I'd also like to work on specific crimes. That way I can tell you exactly how many burglaries of residents are in the county or businesses.
Right, okay.
I, I, I didn't want to interrupt your presentation.
I really wanted to just introduce myself and answer questions.
So, here's a, here's a question. So, on, you have a statistic on the burglaries. Say, uh, how many of those that were reported that you have been arrested? Do you?
These were not only reported and arrested filed, I can't tell you how many have been reported with no suspect or.
Oh, so there could have been thousands?
There could have been.
And that were reported, but nobody was arrested?
Right.
So how does that give us a, that just gives us an idea of how?
Right.
It just, it just seems like, you know, a dat- data with a great big hole in it.
And what I'm helping, what I'm trying to, I'm actually going to all the city councils to give information on what my office is keeping busy with.
Right.
And what we are actually working on.
Well, you're, you're on the other side of the spectrum after they actually catch somebody.
Exactly. Right. And I wouldn't have the information, in fact, I've talked to all officers.
That would be with law enforcement, the cities and the counties.
Right. And they would.
The county, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
And I don't actually see them until there is a suspect that I can find.
So we, indeed, we'd have to get a statistic out of a thousand burglaries.
Sure.
Our, our solve rate might be in the around of ten percent.
I can't think of that, it could be, I don't, I'd be surprised if it were.
You mean that high?
Um, the solve rate would be higher than that.
Really?
I do.
I, I, I had a burglary at my establishment, where they still was safe, with fingerprints all over the place.
And nobody was in the system, imagine again.
We got, and, I don't, I don't know, I just, and there was, there was some evidence there, and it wasn't solved. I mean, let alone so many other burglaries that I, I hear happening, that there's this in and out. And, you know, it could have been somebody walking up to the back of a pickup, parked in front of the, the owner's ha- of the house.
Sure, and that was.
And taking out, you know, that's a burglary. So how many of those are solved? I, I would be surprised if it was a very high percentage, so, probably could be wrong.
Well, we can check with the sheriff, we're pretty busy, I, I gotta tell you, and, and I can speak to what the sheriff finds and doesn't find. So I, I don't know those statistics, but what I do see are cases when they come in, they, um, people can be surprisingly not very smart when they're breaking into houses and get tripped up pretty easily and, and those kinds of things. But I have no idea, and I'm starting to hear about your experience.
Several years ago.
And it's not uncommon, when I take juries, all the time. I, one of my questions is how many people here have been a victim of crime? Or how many people have had to go law enforcement on a crime with family members, those kinds of questions. I, I bet you thirty percent of jurors raise their hand and talk about they had their car broken into. They had, you know, never solved, right? And so those are ridiculous.
So does that make them, uh, in your eyes or in defense's eyes, if they were victims of a burglary and you've got a burglar on trial? Do they, uh, uh, recuse or, or, you know?
Does it disqualify them?
Yeah.
No, I don't. I think if someone's been a victim and they've been treated well by the law enforcement community. You can't hold it against a police officer if someone's a really good burglar and gets in and gets out. We have them up and down the coast. But if they did everything they could have, when I talked to the juror, and they, they tell me they're not going to hold it against the state or the current law enforcement agency that they're working with, I trust them. Because I, I want jurors that are reasonable and have been in the situation where they've been.
Of course, sure.
Yeah. So I don't, normally the defense boots are right out there.
I was gonna say, I, I took the most of the music, uh, I was in the jury room. And, uh, there were, a guy accused Lincoln County, this was about several years ago, Lincoln County of roughing it up. And, uh, when they were selecting a jury, there was, one of the candidates was an African American. And they said, well, do you think, have you ever had a bad experience with police? This is timely. It's, well, you know, this has been, I remember years ago, I was driving through Platte County up in Astoria. We pulled over, I didn't think for any reason, and, and when I started to ask the police officer, he threw me up over the hood of his car. And, and while my son was watching and everything, and, you know, roustered me and handcuffed me and then eventually let me go. But, you know, in this case, I think I could render a fair judgment.
I was gonna ask him if I was a prosecutor, but I didn't remember that.
No, it was some time before. I was, so, thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah. I know that you guys, uh, it's, you're overwhelmed almost.
We're keeping our head, I've got a really good team. I came into, and I'll be in just a moment, I have been prosecuting cases in Lincoln County since, yeah, 2004. And I've kind of grown up in the case office as a prosecutor. And I've been luckily enough to be named chief deputy right before Rafflet left. And with that, there was kind of a big turnover of prosecutors, and I could be in picking every one of them. And these are people who really care about victims, they do work hard. They're, they're, you know, I'm at the office now, getting ready for this event, and, you know, I've got four prosecutors at the office right now working late. So I, I appreciate your comments about us working hard, and I can tell you, we've got a really good team going right now.
Uh, Michelle, you mentioned that you, the statistics are countywide right now.
Yes.
But you're gonna have them district or city separated?
Try to get a way that our database can separate them out. And what I can do now is by law enforcement agency, but that doesn't help us for depot bay, because you've got the rest of county competing. So what I'm trying to figure out is if I can do it by somehow street names or geography. I've got someone on it, I just haven't solved it yet. We were trying to set this, have to do a lot of statistics for child abuse victims and things like that, so we can, you know, report on grants. And that was the only priority. And when I started trying to figure out, you know, how can I show the citizens of Lincoln County really what they're facing? Because your, your challenges are a lot, you know, different than what yahats might be, your Lincoln City, and, and what should depot bay be focusing on? If you've got extra money or more focus, or someone that comes in with a specific resource, it might be nice to be able to tell you, put it here instead of there. But I was, I was not able to work in the database yet.
Any idea, if you can't, if you haven't had your ID for solving it yet, is there any idea on when that might happen?
I can, actually, I'll see you next Friday, I can, I can look at a timeframe and see if they can give them up to me. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Of course, I appreciate you not talking with us and introducing yourself. The third topic seems to be the homeless population, and what kind of barrier is that having on the current statistics in Lincoln County?
I don't have anything to measure that. Let me tell you how it is a challenge for my office. Several layers of challenges. I have no interest in putting folks that are homeless in jail just because they're homeless, folks with mental illness who are, you know, out there doing things that are irritating, maybe scary for people, simply because of mental illness that results in homelessness. And then additionally, we have drug court and hope court, that you really have to have residence to be able to participate in those programs. Being homeless is a real barrier to being able to go to those programs and be successful. I have no way to measure how somebody who is homeless is committing or not committing crimes, because I never have that information. I, I can tell you that we have a large volume of people here on vacation or training or not from here committing crimes, and then they're being placed on probation here and using resources that way. I think, and I don't know the number, but our population on the coast on the weekends can swell by two or three times, you know, all summer long. That's the same deal as well. So there's no way that I can measure that right now, but the challenges I see are those, those categories. Well, who are they trying to get, help, treatment, or whatever to intervene and prevent them from coming into the criminal justice system? Without a lot of resources. I don't have any resources right now for the homeless population where they would actually be able to get stabilized into our mental health courts or treatments, but I wish I could use for that.
Thank you.
Sure. Well, I know you've got a long agenda, I really just wanted to say thank you. And if there's anything that I can do, I, I have cards, I don't think that's the way that people will contact anybody anymore. If, like a card, I'd, I'd be happy to leave one with you. And if you lose it, or someone doesn't operate this way, just go on our website, there's a link to you right there. At it. Yeah, yeah. County website. No Facebook. We haven't, we haven't jumped into that yet. We do have a county website where we have a page link, and it's got our information, other things we're trying to build on there. But I'll just leave these up. I'm actually trying to get rid of these, I went from deputy district attorney to chief deputy and now to DA, so. Thank you. I want to use up all the ones I have, I'll give you the whole gold one. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone think of any questions? So I'll leave you with this, I, I, I want to encourage everyone here, and I'm sure you all do, that jury service is so important, and a lot of people, myself included, get wrapped up in everything else. And, you know, when we get into the jury room and have maybe an opportunity to get out of jury service, um, don't. We need reasonable people on our juries. I really want to encourage everyone to give me feedback on the DDAs, you know, it's hard for me to be in court all the time. I want to make sure that our DDAs are treating people fairly and doing a good job in there. If they're not, I want to hear about it, and the way I hear about it is typically from people who serve on jury service. So, um, bring the feedback, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Reports, those office officers, boards, and standing committees, do you have anybody? Public comments? Anybody? Okay, I do. I mean, unfinished business, there's a legal review, which I requested of our counselor in regards to a Supreme Court ruling that's somewhat confusing in a way, but again, it's, it's something that came over the news, and we just lost some more of our rights. Could you explain that to us?
Sure. The district attorney has another perspective on it, please, may have a different perspective. It's a Fourth Amendment case that came down, I believe it was June 20th, and on a five to three vote, that we're missing. So we have, it appears now that police can ask for your identification while you're walking down the street doing nothing wrong. And if, which is illegal, stop. But if by chance you have a warrant for your arrest or anything, even if it's an infraction, it somehow else salvages the, um, the legal, the illegal stopping. So this particular person had meth in his pocket, and they suspected that, in most cases, that go to Supreme Court, it's usually unsavory characters. And clearly, all of us think about ourselves that, oh, I have the meth in their pocket. But it kind of a little bit of a chilling effect, you can just be walking down the street and be asked for ID in, in the US. So it's kind of, it's fairly momentous.
Do you have the right to refuse to provide ID?
That's what I would do.
That's what I would do.
That's what I'd tell my child, I'd tell my son to.
Yeah, you're under no obligation to cooperate with, with police under any circumstances unless they want to detain or arrest you, isn't that the case?
It is, but, but they have techni- they have techniques to put you off of your.
I know.
Your logical mode, so, uh, I'm trained to just think that way. I just, I just look at it and say, am I being arrested? Well, no. And you walk off. But it's, it's a chilling effect that now, if there's any suspicion and you're walking, that that's, that can actually be solved by a possible.
I don't think he wants a figure.
I'm gonna pull a figure, dude.
Alright, go ahead, carry on.
Yeah, but that's, that's the point, it's a, it's a chilling effect on people walking around. And frankly, I think the mayor was right to ask about this, about this, because our Supreme Court, if anything, is going kind of bolted. You know, if there's some direction, you think they're going to go in one direction, whether it's Fourth Amendment, Second Amendment, Eighth Amendment. But this one surprises me, because I think the people in the majority have a tendency to be perceived as small government or little government. And frankly, it's that group that carried the day. So, I don't know, I don't even know what to make of the Supreme Court anymore. Some people that are perceived to be small government have more intrusive rulings. Some people that are perceived to be big government have, have dissent in some of these cases, so it's, uh, it's all chilly.
Um, let me ask you this, I know that, that to a certain extent, this is, is now settled law, because the Supreme Court has, has handed down their interpretation on this. But is there any avenue that, by where this can be reopened or revisited or, or, you know, somehow that they can, they can take another look at it? Or would that require a separate suit being, you know, both offered and accepted by the court in order for, by the Supreme Court in order for that to happen?
Unfortunately, this is kind of a running joke in law schools. And I went to law school back in, let me think, late seventies, early eighties. And the running joke was a policeman could stop you if you're looking left, policeman could stop you if you're looking right. The policeman could stop you if you didn't make eye contact. Policeman could stop you if you didn't make eye contact. I mean, there are cases for literally everything, because criminal defense lawyers are there to, you know, try to protect civil rights. And clearly, these are unsavory people, but these, but that's the very reason why you try to protect the civil rights. And so if one of us are faced with that same situation, so the law prof- the point the law professor was making is, if you make eye contact, that may be suspicious behavior. If you don't make eye contact, it may be suspicious behavior. So I'm sure that some case will come by that will say, if you were walking and whistling while you were walking, and the policeman suspected that people who whistle have a tendency to be meth users, the simple answer is, we don't know which way to go. The problem is, the, the rights might have been eroded long before I went to law school. I mean, it probably has been. And, and I understand that the lawful goal is to fight crime, but sometimes fighting crime includes moving the other way.
Sometimes the word crime is, is rather loosely interpreted depending on your personal filters as well. I mean, you know, quite frankly, I've, I know people who could see, you know, my boyfriend walking down the street, who's, you know, gassed up the vehicles for everybody here, including me, and is probably, you know, he's six foot two, he's a big guy. And you've never met him, but you guys know what I'm talking about. And, yeah, he's a big scary guy, because he's a big guy. This is a man who has been a accidental Buddhist and a pacifist his entire life.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I have literally seen him give the shirt off his back to somebody simply because they admired the shirt. And, you know, just about the sweetest and biggest green puff guy, don't tell him I said that. Uh, but yet, because some people have the perception, you know, I wouldn't see him that way, none of you guys would see him that way, but other people do. And it's, you know, it comes, in my opinion, it comes down to a matter of simply knowing what our rights are, the rights that we have, and sticking to them, and not letting, you know, not letting ourselves be tricked. Because I've seen that little hook that they'll do about that, yeah, you're free to go, but let me just ask you one more thing. And that's how they get you. And you don't have to answer that question, you don't have to answer any of them.
Mr. Mayor, rather than take up this session, the city council discussing whether police are important or not, I'd like to ask them why this is brought up to the city council? What does this have to do with the city council?
I heard the report through the radio in PR, and the reporter was talking about the Supreme Court making this decision. And my first thought was, what, how does this apply to our civil rights? What we're good at, but we've already got our civil rights employees. And now the Supreme Court has taken liberty to put another hold on, on our civil rights. So that's how it plays here.
Okay, alright. I guess with such a busy agenda and more important things close to home, I just thought, firstly, I don't feel that this is worth a half an hour, forty minute discussion. Why is the Supreme Court? Let's see, depot bay city council. Might as well.
How long have we taken up so far this way? No, just a minute. Are we at the twelve minute mark? No, not yet?
I didn't really watch the clock, but. So, under cam.
Okay. Well, I think it's interesting, I, I only have one question. Is, who, who brought the, the case to the Supreme Court? Was it the opposition or the people who are the law enforcement that wanted to get it stopped?
It was the defendants' attorney. But that happens a lot. See, you know.
Worked against it.
So redress. Well, the guy was in jail anyway, so.
Right, okay.
This case is very interesting. Like I say, nothing's changed in the forty years that I've been, or thirty-five, whatever, in our law school. So nothing's changed, it, it goes back and forth, and it may not be germane to city business, and I may agree with that, but it's never bad to be mindful of which way the law is shifting. I mean, whether it's, as you point out, black people being pulled out of cars and, I mean, you know, everybody is a black person at some point. Everybody's a. Everybody's a meth head at some point. I mean, at some point, that's the civil rights of their fault. So you're right, it's more of a city slot than it is city business, but it's on the agenda, I agree with it.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you for your explanation. I couldn't, and I still don't understand it totally, but we'll move on. And thanks for your support on this. Item B, proposed ordinance number three oh five, an ordinance that takes a three percent tax on the state marijuana items by a marijuana retailer. Excuse me. And referring the ordinance to the voters. We have a second reading.
Yes, just for the benefit of the people who are in the audience who may not have been at the July fifth council meeting, proposed ordinance three oh five, which would upon adoption impose a three percent city tax on the sale of recreational marijuana within the city. And also refer that this ordinance to the voting people in November. It was adopted at the first reading at the July fifth council meeting. So tonight, we would start with the second reading. The other thing that occurred at the July fifth meeting was a motion to review both readings by Pennsylvania. So if the council's ready, I'll proceed with the second reading of the proposed ordinance three oh five by Pennsylvania. So proposed ordinance number three oh five, an ordinance imposing three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer, and referring the ordinance to the voters at the general election to be adopted on November eighth, twenty sixteen. And so at the second reading, are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? I'm, I'm not seeing or hearing any. And I would let you know that since the July fifth meeting, we have not gotten any written comments presented to the city hall. But I did click this article out of the newspaper, I, I thought that was a comment. It's the flower pot welcomes tax, I thought that was interesting. So other than that, no comments have been received. So if the council would like to move to adopt at the second reading, that would be the next step.
Mr. Mayor, will we approve ordinance three oh five as written here in the second, second reading?
I would second that.
Can we do that as presented?
Yes. Do you mean just call them all? Yes. Call them. Okay. Matt Clark?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
No.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Okay, so the ordinance three oh five is, has passed at the second reading. So the next thing on the agenda is proposed resolution number four fifty, which is the resolution that will call upon its adoption, call to put the ordinance to the adoption on the November eighth ballot. It includes the resolution to accomplish that. It also, exhibit A attached is a notice of city major election that includes the ballot title, the caption, the question and summary. In other words, this is what would appear on the ballot to the voters. Exhibit B is a copy of the ordinance three oh five. And exhibit C is a graphic explanatory statement that would be provided in relation to this nomination. And all of that will go into motion, we, we publish the ballot major, city attorney, we use it before it's published, we file it with the public court in a tightly manner and give it on the ballot. So all of that will proceed upon your approval and adoption of this resolution portion.
I move that we include the resolution number four fifty as written.
Second.
Discussion. Go please.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Matt Clark?
Yes.
Item C. D, excuse me. I don't know why I'm thinking. Probably just, I was trying to find my mind. Surviving equity abatement of building dilution.
Tends to be an old ordinance. What was the reasoning for this? I'm not aware of, but I, other than maybe was, was the idea to reword some of the wording and take out parts like the street commissioner in section three? Some of the, maybe adding in section one with the waste oil gas and the flammable stuff? Maybe trying to integrate some kind of tall brush and bushes that are up against the structures? That seems to be a big, big part of some of the usances that buildings have in deep bay that, that we deem part of meeting the criteria for ordinance number twenty nine.
In section one, item E seems to pretty well explain that in the the structure which is because of disconnection or because of lack of doors or windows is an attractive nuisance and a danger to children and to other persons. And or harbor after vagrants and criminals. And that term persons shall include every natural person or partnership, association, corporation. So I guess what we're asking new counselors to go over this and modify for our needs.
We'll do that. So I nailed my, my skill. You folks want me to just clean it up, right? I mean, that, there's no reason, like with, when it says commissioner or fire chief or things of that, you just clean it up and make sure that it comports with modern.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. But you don't want to, and by position, resident and street commissioner and enforcement officer. Okay. But you don't want to, you don't want to enhance any penalties, it seems like it has plenty of teeth in it. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. It sure does.
Ray, what about what you mentioned about, do you need to include shrubbery or something? Or is that?
Yeah, there's really tall grass or tree brush up against or in front of the, the building that. I've, I've talked to the fire department, there's been a lot of complaints where people say the brush is very high, it's very tinder dry. And there's really nothing I can, there's nothing in our ordinances that say I can, and then they look to the fire department, the fire department says, they, we can't do anything about that.
So, so is there anything that, that we should add to this, to move this?
I don't know if that should be added to maybe another ordinance that I can use. Right, because twenty nine is basically goes in front of the city council, not for me to really go out and, and use as an ordinance violations. This would really, this, the worst case scenario gets to the council and they deem that this building abuses. That it's beyond getting ahold of the owner and saying, here, violation of this, this ordinance. But one of those lacking pieces of the ordinance violations that I don't have, and maybe it should go integrated in another one, one sixty-four as a garbage and rubbish ordinance. Maybe that could be fit in there or something, that's something I need to, I think I talked to Pete about.
Is there any way, counselor, and we can put this in the warning or it would be liable or readily available for writing to use instead of having to go through us?
Well, I think to declare a nuisance that we can actually affect somebody's property rights, it should go through you folks. I mean, I don't think anybody should lose their property rights based on one person's say so. So I, I wouldn't suggest you keep it the way it is. I, I wouldn't delegate that authority, I'd say.
I'm just looking at, looking over this now, in section one, paragraph A, it says, a structure which for the want of proper repairs are in, by reason of age and dilapidated condition, by reason of poorly installed electrical wiring or equipment, defective chimney, defective gas connection, heating apparatus which covers all mechanical, possible mechanical failures, or for any other cause or reason. And I think inserting in there something to the effect of, by failing to properly maintain vegetation on the property is, and then followed by, is especially liable to fire. And is so situated or occupies those to danger any other building or property or human life, for one thing. And then down in, let's see, C, in that same paragraph, or same section of structure, shall be kept or maintained or shall be in a filthy or in sanitary condition, especially liable to cause the spread of contagious or infectious disease or diseases. And we might want to add some language in there, or that is liable to cause injury. If, if someone should go on the property, and I'm thinking of the, you know, the place that we're all thinking about down there. But, you know, with those doors open and everything, and it specifically addresses, you know, open doors or windows that, that people can go in. But, you know, you could say that would be like leaving barrels of water around your property. And so mosquitoes are breeding all over the place and causing a nuisance, it could spread disease. Or you could say you have broken glass, medical waste, human waste, or other debris that could cause injury to anyone who would go in, say, for instance, if the building was on fire. Or somebody was injured to try and maintain the place or, or, you know, do some other thing to it. You, we, you kind of get, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that's just what I've picked out. I mean, it's, it's already in here to a certain degree, I think we just need to kind of sharpen the point a little bit.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw in some suggestions, those are good spots, by the way, too, to pop them in. But I'll, I'll try to get those suggestions in, I'll try to leave it in caps so everybody knows what things are, or we'll figure it out. But somehow you guys can tell either underlined or cap that that's been added.
Okay, highlighted or something.
And see if that's what you folks meant, meant to say. But no, I, and I'm not going to reinvent the wheel, I might check online or check some previous clients of mine to see what they've said. Because I think I can get my hands on an ordinance like this, this little newer than nineteen seventy-six. So I'll see if other things have been thrown in that maybe, and I'm just.
I'm sure they must be by one.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, so. Yeah, many of those, those are good spots to pop that in.
Okay. New business? The glass recycling, Ben, down in Harbor, has become a real nuisance. As much as it's full, once it gets full, it stays that way for a long time. Broken glass is not the cause of that, there's a room for it, for one thing. And I checked into also the, the brass or glass recycling business. And right now, glass is a, is a drag on the market, they can't sell it. So the, the businesses that are dealing in that are storing it on their property or somebody else. In this case, it happens to be ours. And Ben has taken up two parking spots that were designed or designated for the fishing community that comes down here. So I'd like to do whatever it takes to have a recycling company remove it, put it on their own property. That, that'd be the best thing, you know?
Yeah, I talked to North Lincoln Sanitary and they told me that it was a council motion to place that where it is. So if the council would like to remove it, they would like a motion to have it removed.
Right, and that was, four years or so ago, when I was in the quarter mile behind the city hall there, was it their wastewater?
They, they just kind of ran out of room, we, we, the city just doesn't have any land that we could place, for placement of it. It kind of, with the expansion of the wastewater plant, took up any extra room we had over there. City hall is just too tight, narrow, and with the overlay now of asphalt that the, it, the way the thing is loaded, loaded in the summertime, it'll, it'll gather in the asphalt mix.
Well, we, we don't have any control over a market of used glass. But it's so, I, I wish somebody would make a motion to, to remove.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, but I have a question first. The glass that's contained in it now, would, if we told North Lincoln to take it out and put it on their own property, would the glass go as well?
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. I mean, they'll just, they, they move it and unload it, actually, take that one way and a new one comes in its place, when they haul the glass out.
Yeah. In this case, we tend to tell them.
It's so costly for haulers to deal with glass that I think that's why it's, it's kind of taking a backseat to some of the priorities.
Okay.
And then I've been to some of the, there's some really high-tech glass recycling, I'm on the, the chair of the SWAC and it's all a basic story for Lincoln County. It's pretty neat how they recycle the glass now, it's all done with air and lasers. And they smash glass all in big pods in colors, it goes through a machine in brown, clear, blue, green, they all get it separated in different piles. And then, but those are some of the glass companies too that Ben's been hot water for. It's been a tough one, everybody.
I move that we contact North Lincoln Sanitation and ask them to remove the glass recycling.
So that, what, essentially what we're saying is that we don't, we don't, are going to have a glass recycling getting degraded?
It's at their Ocean Lake Center. And the, the glass has got to go somewhere.
Thompson Sanitary also has one at, at the Block Beach.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't watch glass there all the time. I like.
So right now, North Lincoln Sanitary is not picking up our, our glass recycling?
They are, we just have to call and remind them, they're, they're pretty good at it.
But it's, it's kind of just, it's a little bit full right now.
It's pretty full, and then they.
So we want to get rid of our, our crap of glass recycling? Do you think it's that much of a nuisance?
Um, I, I recycle a lot, so. Um, I, I don't know. I recycle a lot, so.
Right, right. We recycle, but, and we've, uh, saved us money for some.
It's too bad we can't find a home for it. Uh, and cardboard and under stuff, because we, we've lost our cardboard and, and.
We, you can, you can check this road, because I know they have a big glass recycling container right there that they take care of.
Yes.
And, and see what, how much they have.
Yeah, I think they use Thompson Road, and, and, and Thompson does the, the glass hauling through the road. Um, yeah, because they, they actually go to, um, this, these, there's three places in Portland that take the glass, recycle it.
What, there's three?
There's a pretty good market for it, but it's so costly, um, that it, that by the time you get the hauling, it's not bad now because a few prices are really good right now. So, it's not such a, you know, hardship on haulers and, and where they become minus, you know, in red in it, but, uh, it's still costly, but.
Yeah, um, now that we've got that.
Costly for who?
As. For the haulers to, to, to recycle.
Now that we have that as a motion and a second, now I, I would like to say that with that hard pill to swallow for us, as it is, for the city's citizens, because it was darn convenient, I'd like to also, once we're done with this motion, make some suggestions on web page notice, uh, possibly something posted at the post office, saying where alternative locations are.
Um, I'd also like to, um, be clear that, uh, in my second, I'm, this is only a temporary measure, I'm believing, until we can find a more appropriate place to put it that isn't going to be taking up, um, already precious parking spaces. Um, because of course, we, we value the recycling and we, you know, we don't want, we're doing this reluctantly. At least I know I am. I, I think Robert is as well and other people. Um, so, this is only until we can find a more suitable home for it that it can be situated and not cause, you know, create more problems.
There, there's still a curbside recycling.
Yeah, they don't think.
There's a lot of glass that's worth missing, and, and it's right up there with like cardboard, like large cardboard and stuff, so it's going to fall into that category. Just not have, not having a merit. Unless one of the areas, uh, of maybe a big business in Depot Bay or Maple Beach area, maybe, maybe that recycle could be put somewhere else, maybe like, say, Thrickway and Harbin Lot or something like that. Um, and work with North Lincoln to find a spot for us.
Yes, it stands now. It, uh, the value has gone out of that used glass. So, it's a storage area for Lincoln County or Lincoln City. Um, so.
Well, we will, so if the council makes a motion, we'll just let, let North Lincoln know.
Okay, great. Is that something you want to hear, yes or no?
I, I. I, I, excuse me, Mayor, I'm still, I'm still, I guess, a little bit confused why it's not being emptied on a regular basis and why it's an issue if, if we have glasses. If the, uh, North Lincoln Sanitary is, is, we're not paying for this, right? It's, it's a, it's a service that's offered by North Lincoln Sa- Sanitary. Is, am I correct on that?
Right, and we're happy to notify them when it's full.
Okay, that's our, that's our only burden?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh.
That's the glass on the ground.
Okay.
Community hazard.
And it's taking up parking, I guess.
What, and where, where exactly is it located?
It's behind the pump station in Harbor.
Okay.
Uh, you know, uh, so when you drive around where the fish cleaning station is, and there's a cedar fence, so it's on the, um, north side of the pump station.
At the, at the south end of the, very south end of the, uh.
Yeah, so if you see, you see it from the harbor side.
So, it's, it's.
Like from the bridge, you can see.
It's taking up spaces there?
It, yeah, some of the turn around and some of the. Um, no, I mean, it's, we put it there because it was the most convenient spot at the time.
Okay.
Um, which I think.
And now, and now who's complaining?
It used to be up here.
Who, who was complaining about this? Is it, is it you, or has it been one of the citizens?
It's, I'm not sure.
What on the, where did the place went up?
Yeah, who's, who's complaining about?
Oh, well, it was, uh, fall last, last week, I think. And glass was falling out of it and broken all around it. And, uh, that's when I, when I thought I'd ask the council to ask, uh, North Lincoln to find a place for it, other than down on the, the property where, uh, people with their vehicles and trailers and so on.
Right.
Will be driving across that glass.
Okay, given that, and how long has it been there?
Uh, probably since we paid city hall, uh, four years, about four years.
So, uh, what we're proposing is that it's taking away the glass recycling that's offered for free to the city of Depot Bay until further notice. Is that what we're doing? I just want to be clear on this.
Yeah, that's why they said they can remove it. They didn't want to, like, remove it for the summer and then put it back in the winter. They would rather just have a yes or no answer.
Right. I just, uh, you know, I.
Because that was an option, was, was move it for the summer and then back when it's slowed down at the harbor or put it back, but that's still a lot of work for them.
But they're offering it to us as a free service?
Yeah.
Okay, so, they're willing to take that work and we give them the exclusive rights to, uh, offer garbage service in the city of Depot Bay, is that right?
Yes, they're, they're, uh, deemed the, um, this is their district for garbage. And then it ends at Otter Rock, and then it's Thompson through South Beach and then Dolls from South Beach to, uh, the Halls.
So, this is just a way, by offering this free service to us, the, of, of thanking the city, basically, for, you know, offering, uh, I mean, giving them the exclusive right, the franchise, uh, all, all the garbage hauling in Depot Bay without any competition. I know, because I've tried to find somebody else to come in here and haul my garbage and they will not.
Well, um, yeah, um, Joe, thank you for bringing that in light. I assume that this was because they would not come and pick up the glass. Are they still willing to come and get the glass?
Yeah, oh, yeah, other people, we have to call them and remind them. They, they don't monitor it. Although they're now doing carcass runs daily. I mean, during fishing season right now, they're, they're there every day to check to see if the dumpsters have been done for fish. So, I would think they keep, all right, with the driver, they, I think they're different drivers. There's, there's raw garbage runners and then there's the recycled guys, so.
But even if, even though the price of glass has dropped very dramatically, they still would have the call, had a call, come and get the glass?
Yeah, if it's old, they, they just say, okay, we'll deliver as soon as we can. But sometimes it's, you know, if it's a Friday, they gotta wait till maybe a Tuesday or Wednesday when they pay the driver that's still in the recycle. Because they got to get an empty dumpster to come here, and then they drop it and pull the other one and dump the other one. There's quite a bit of asphalt, um, damage that may be prepared, too, because they're so heavy and the wheels really bite into that chip seal down there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of that.
And how often?
They dump it in the summertime, probably, uh, it gets full every, through eight weeks. I'd say every other month.
The other, another thing that I'm not considering is that, uh, ground, uh, the parking area down there was, uh, the state marine ward involved in it. And it's for the parking of, uh, vehicles and the trailers for the use as a, what they want for the state marine ward was.
And they asked, since we came up with another spot, maybe going to, but they don't want to have the try, let's try it here, let's try it there, and they.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but we're talking about the east side of the bay, not the south side of the bay. I don't know this, uh, if the east side of the bay, uh, has anything to do with the, are, are we talking about around Dog Side or?
It's, uh, it's right in the, in the total parking area of all the boat trailers.
It's in the harbor pump station by the playground.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
And, and the other thing it does, is, uh, it, um, when the place gets full, people can't get around to make the turn to go back out, come up to the highway again.
Yeah.
Well, uh, the, uh, if, if people, if it, if it's, uh, household glass, you know, then we're, you know, that people are taking recycling there. Is it that going to be, uh, people are going to put it in regular trash?
Wine bottles and litter bottles.
And so, uh, and then if it's, if it's fishermen's glass, it's going to go in a regular garbage. We're going to, city, they're going to forgive me, uh, for, for asking, uh, Brady, but that glass is going to go somewhere, is it not?
Yeah.
Okay, so if it doesn't go into the glass recycling, uh, reset the goal that the city does not have to pay for it to have an empty. It's going to go into a garbage can that the, probably, that the, that the city does pay for to have an empty. Am I right?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay, so.
If they can't, if they can't recycle, it'll go into the, it'll go into the raw garbage.
That happens with Rayford.
How like cardboard is destination now, unfortunately.
Yeah.
We don't need cardboard recycling.
Mr. Mayor, the issue is not whether or not we want to have glass recycling in Depot Bay. I think it's very obvious that we really, really do. The issue is where that dumpster or that glass recycling, or whatever they call it, where, where that should be located so that it's not, uh, made regular useless, uh, parking that, that is obviously needed and it's not creating a hazard. Because frankly, if I were a parent, taking my kids down to that playground that's right within feet of where, you know, where these, this glass is all over the, the pavement, if I was down to take my kids down there, there and saw that, I would turn right around and I would leave. And I would probably not bring my kids back because who knows how long that's been there? Who knows how long it's going to be there? Who's going to clean it up? So, obviously, we found that that's not an appropriate place to locate this. So, again, I want to state that my second on this and my vote is very reluctant. But I do know that we will be, you know, if we remove that, that it'll be restored as quickly as possible as soon as a, a suitable place can be found. And then also, there are glass recycling options that are available to the citizens locally. And us dedicated recyclers are going to, going to do whatever we have to to make sure that those bottles get recycled and don't go in the garbage. We can't speak for the people from out of town or out of state that aren't used to recycling, but, um, but I know personally that if I have to, you know, if I have to load it in my car and take it to, you know, the Mulat Beach drop, maybe drop it there instead of dropping it in the parking lot, I'll do that because I'm going in that direction anyway. And, you know, so I don't take it there, I just take it there. It's not a big deal.
Um, I appreciate that, and, uh, I might add that my wife makes a dr- a run three times a week up to the recycling plants with all the stuff.
I recycle there for the household, um, things were just strange.
And, and she likes, uh, gourmet wine, too, so you bet those bottles are more up there, so. Uh, call please.
Bishop Brown? Yes. Wyson?
Asbridge.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mackler?
Yes.
Grant?
Hey.
Motion passed.
All right, we will let North Lincoln know.
New business, IMV, construction bid, co-stating of infrastructure, uh, over improvements, I mean, I'm sorry, project. Good luck, Brady.
Um, so, I think we need to approve the, uh, construction bid from, uh, Devils Lake Rock Company. Do you have that?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of, um, Ron Michael, his letter, recommendation of the one?
That's Century West. Century West?
Century West.
Uh, yeah, recommendation of, that's the engineer we have, his, yeah, his recommendation to, to choose Devils Lake. I kind of got ahead of myself earlier in the, uh, urban renewal meeting, so Devils Lake. But they were, they just going around looking at areas, trying to see if they can expedite with construction going, but we're still in the approval stage.
Do we know what the issues with the second contract were?
They, they were higher in materials. If that, if that's the price difference. It was about four thousand, it was, it was very close. There's two, there's two, uh, hitters. One was Mokon out of Newport. Um, they're kind of big, too. They're state-like or out in outside state. And then, uh, Devils Lake Rock is, uh, local company out of, and, uh, Devils Lake is the company that actually worked, um, on this stuff. It went quite well. So, they, they currently have done very well for the work they've done. They've also done projects on Mitchell and Ainsley and, and, uh, I think Williams Avenue. Um, they've done jobs here and there for, for the city for many, many years. And we've never really had any red flag issues with Devils Lake Rock. So, um, they're, uh, they're a company that gets split into, they're now, their Morris is, is, uh, mainly, uh, a whole other sector of their company. And Devils Lake Rock is, is another, I think they were brothers that had a big business and then they kind of cut the business in half, and one, one's Devils Lake, the other's Morris.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, um, golly, this is going to be an, we seem to have word distract. I move that we, uh, adopt the recommendation by Century West Engineering to, uh, award the contract to Devils Lake Rock Company and notify both companies. And to give the second bidder seven days following the date of notice to file a protest.
Exactly.
In accordance with this section.
One second.
Mr. Congressman?
Call please.
Wyson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mackler?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Bishop Brown?
Yes.
Propose ordinance, uh, three oh six, an ordinance regulating placement and maintenance of mailboxes in the public right of way within the city of Depot Bay, providing penalties for violations thereof and declaring emergency.
Mayor, if I might, um, y'all should have a copy of the draft proposed ordinance number three oh six, which, um, our attorney has worked on and come up with the wording. You had the, you had his draft wording at the very last meeting, so now we have, we've added a couple of rases and, which explains why, why we're looking at this ordinance. So, it's presented to the council tonight to begin the adoption process. If the council's ready to do that, I would note that there have been some comments received. You should have two of the, copies, copies of two written comments, um, on this proposed ordinance. We also received some verbal comments from Peter Bro- Brohman, who is US Postal Service fellow that's working on this project. Um, anyway, if you're ready to proceed into the ordinance adoption process, at the time that we called on public comments, I would review those public written comments and the post offices, if you're ready.
Curry, was that, uh, information from the, the post office, was that supposed to be included?
No, it's not. It wasn't written. I, I made notes. So, I mean, he called and so I will relay what he's shared. It was just about three different points. Um, but, but the two written pieces you have is, one is a request, uh, from Valerie Sovereign, and it's her comments on the proposed ordinance. And she did request that it be read into the record, and I would remind the com- And I would remind the council that those kind of requests are up to the council if you want that read into the record. And you also have a copy of a letter from Jeff Millian, which is, most of the letters are complaints. But the very last paragraph, he speaks to this proposed ordinance. Those are the two different correspondence, I guess. That would relate to this proposed ordinance.
I'd just like to make a comment about the letter by Mr. Millian and all of the people that are concerned about this and that we, you know, we really are hurting you and we are really doing the best we can to try and address this. I do want to state though that a lot of the body of this letter by Mr. Millian is beyond our scope of ability. We do not have the authority to ask any private citizen to go and apologize to him for any statement that's made under their First Amendment rights and freedom of speech. So I'd just like to leave that right there.
I would also add, and I read this today and I actually looked the clock and wished I had had time to review the audio from our last meeting. In the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down in Mr. Millian's letter, near the end, he states, "Mr. Millian also yelled threatening remarks at us from street whilst stopped in front of our house and personally threatened me at the city council meeting." I for one do not recall that. I never heard a threat. If I'm incorrect, I'm not in fear of that.
I don't recall anything about that.
Would you like me to comment? Would you like me to comment? Mr. Mayor, would you like me to comment?
What do you have? That's a burden of that.
Well, basically what he's saying is that I threatened him. Would you like me to comment on that question?
Yeah, go ahead, Bernie.
My name's Bernie Lyden.
Maybe we missed something.
I think you missed a lot. My name's Bernie Lyden and I was quite aware of this complaint of the city where the individual, Mr. Jeff Millian, proceeded to, first of all, call my wife and I a liar because we observed his wife, and he says we in here, and he was nowhere to bring it, but I observed his wife stepping off my property, not in the street, on my property, with a handheld GPS locator from a telephone, which is supposed to be accurate within thirty feet. So she thinks that her handheld was better than the prints that I gave to...
The Asbills. For the...
Well, it's, it's not the Asbills. It's Hyatt House Engineering Report, which outlines the whole property and everything associated with it, including the sidewalk. Now, that's just to try to get your employee out of trouble because it appears that Mr. Millian thinks that I'm working in cahoots with him. So first of all, she did go on my property. And I did warn him right over here that rather than embarrass him publicly that his wife is a liar, which she is, because I perceived what was going on, that she not only went there looking for a location for her mailbox, which he says the USPS gave her permission for. USPS can't give her permission for private property. I showed Brady this print, which is Hyatt House print. We looked at it, ascertained that it was in the wrong spot, that it was private property, and that she submitted, trying to get this so that you get a good perspective on it. She put in a locate the day after she was on my property. She put in the report, says, "I want to be, I am the homeowner and I want to put a locate here in the white spot at south side of the road." She's not the homeowner, and she doesn't have a right to put a locate out on private property. So that's the starting of it. Now, I did complain to Brady. I said, "Look, we just came home and we found Valerie on my property." He, he watched, he understood my complaint. He said, "Okay, I'll go look at it." He went there next day and looked at it.
Okay, well, that explains why we don't know anything about it. You guys are having a private conversation back there.
Yeah.
And then it didn't get that...
My, my threat to him was that now that you know that this private property, that your wife goes on my private property again, I am going to let the sheriff know. So having all of this information here, put that in perspective. And I don't particularly care for the fact that this guy lies. Because he wasn't even there. Yes?
I really hope that you appreciate that your conflict with your neighbor is, you know, our issue here is the mailbox. What your interpersonal conflict with your neighbor and your opinions as to their veracity, that's not our purview. We cannot be mixed in with that.
I understand. I understand.
So, and I appreciate the frustration. I appreciate that, you know, this is a problem. But this is what we have in front of us. The rest of this is rhetoric, innuendo, and one person's point of view. And I'm not saying that I agree with any of it because I don't know about any of it. But we cannot get mixed in in that. We're here to settle the post office issue and to enact this ordinance. The rest of it, I'm afraid, is between you and your neighbor and your attorneys. I'm just saying.
Well, okay. Yeah, and I, and I just wanted you to know that Brady had nothing to do with that. That was my complaint to Brady, and I complained to you this again, you know, you understood what I was saying. That this is private property, so nobody should be putting a locate out on somebody else's property. And that's exactly what you did. So, so you know that Brady is not at fault. You have a wild woman running around locating anywhere she wants.
I appreciate that, and I represent the public record.
Right. And thank you very much for listening to me. I do want you to know that I'm going to carry this one step further. I'm gonna now write my wife, God bless her, is very nice. I'm no longer gonna be nice to them because this was started by the post office. And it goes more than a year and a half ago. And you all know what the circumstances are. So now, that's, the gloves are off. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
So, could you tell us about your conversation with the postal service?
Okay, well, I was gonna ask, is the council want to proceed with the adoption process for this proposal? So, so if you do, what I'd like to do is, I would present the comments when we get to the point of asking for public comments. I would report those to you. So like any time that we're looking at adopting an ordinance, I always ask the council if you'd like me to read the ordinance at both readings in full or if you'd like to move to read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, or that we read ordinance number three oh six into the record by title only.
Say it.
Go ahead, John.
Oh, just the, and not a big deal, but kind of a carryover from the planning commission meeting where, you know, we didn't, we didn't proceed somebody else's interpretation of a proposed, proposed proposal until after we'd gone out to put it and somebody else interpreted it in a way that we couldn't have imagined when we did it. So I would just, I guess at this point, this is just, you know, more or less noise. If we're, if we're gonna just read this by title only, let's make sure that we've all done our homework and read it ourselves.
Gambino?
Yes.
Matla?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Wyson?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll proceed with the first reading of proposed ordinance number three oh six, an ordinance regulating the placement and maintenance of mailboxes in the public right-of-way within the city of Dico Bay, providing penalties for violations thereof and declaring an emergency. So at this first reading, is there anyone in the audience that has questions or comments on this proposed ordinance? So that, are there any persons in the audience? So I'll start with the telephone call from Peter Rowena from the US Postal Service. He had reviewed the ordinance that you have before you. And his comment on section three was where we say, in no case may the mailbox support or the mailbox itself be closer than one foot to the vertical plane of the face of the curb or if there be no curb, closer than one foot to the vertical plane of the traveled portion of the roadway. That's our wording. His comment on that was, is that per the US Postal Service regulation, it's to be six to eight inches back from the curb. So that's in conflict, their regulation is in conflict with what we've written. His next statement was relating to section six. In section six, we allow one additional receptacle for deliveries such as newspapers and advertisements can be installed directly underneath the mailbox. His comment on that was, it's okay to be on the same post, but it cannot touch the mailbox. His last comment that he voiced on that phone call was relating to section seven. And our section seven speaks to if this, if there's some work being done on the roadway where that mailbox is, that's gonna be the mailbox owner's responsibility to maintain access to his mailbox. What his comment was, that he wasn't sure, but he thought perhaps the obligation to maintain the access played with the city. And, and he said that we could look in the DMM, which is the US Postal Service Domestic Mail Manual. And I haven't had a chance to review the one thousand two hundred fifty-seven pages. I'm not sure if he has to find this, but that was his comment, that he wasn't sure, but he thought perhaps that responsibility to maintain access, once there's a mailbox out there in the city right-of-way, lies with the city and not with the owner of the box. So those were his comments. Then we got the written comments from Valerie Sovereign, specific to the proposed ordinance. Do you, she asked for her comments to be read into the record. That's up to the city council. You all have a copy. I can certainly read it if you want to.
I personally don't think that that's necessary. It's available to the public. It's in the public record. And for simply for the interest of Brady, I think that we can make this available to anybody who wants to see it and who certainly are going to consider all of the items on here.
Okay, so you all have, you all have copies. And I guess I would just note that most of her bulleted items are, most of them relate to a possible fee that the city may impose. She did, her last item though, she, she asked if, if the public has an ample opportunity to voice their opinion about this ordinance or is the city rushing into it. We've had this subject on a few council meetings. So it's up to you whether you feel that there's been ample opportunity given. The last correspondence that relates to this proposed ordinance, it has already been discussed, Mr. Jeff Millian. And I would just focus for the purposes of comments on the ordinance. His last paragraph, he says, "There are now too many questions about the proposed ordinance to pass it after the next meeting. By virtue of declaring an emergency, we encourage the city to hold public meetings." So that's the comment relative to this proposed ordinance. For my thoughts. So that's all the comments you have. So if you want to make a motion to adopt it at the first reading, then you can discuss.
Love the ruling that's for the city as a whole. And if somebody elected, please.
Oh, it's, it's that, something in the interim, is it the postmaster down there now? The guy that you said?
Oh, Peter Rowena?
Yeah.
He is, what's his title? He is officer in charge at the Newport Post Office.
So in his reference to this, that our ordinance doesn't comply as written with the, with the post office's ordinance, I mean, the six to eight inches rather than twelve, okay, inches. If we require this, these boxes to be twelve inches back from the curb, then the way I'm getting from what he says is that the post office has the discretion based upon their own, their own guidelines not, not to deliver mail to those boxes. So he's, and this whole thing is about trying to, you know, if we've ever faced anything that could be declared an emergency, I would say this, when we have citizens out there putting mailboxes up, you know, wherever they determine that's a good spot, for, for lack of a better statement on this thing. So, so, so if we're gonna do it, I mean, maybe we should alter that language to be six to eight inches, if that's okay with Brady.
Well, can I say something? I frankly don't think you need to. Number two towards the end, something about construction standards, physical placement, conflict with the provisions of this code, the regulations still control the extent of the conflict. So if we ever have a curb on some of these places, then we will make sure that they're six, eight inches away. But the part that surprised me when I saw that email is the exactness of the placement when in fact the, and curbs are easy to determine. There's no doubt that's easy to come up with a curb, measure six, eight inches in. But then the traveled portion of the roadway, I mean, you take an inexact concept of traveled portion of the roadway and then all of a sudden you give it an exact, you know, so there's enough provision in here. Now frankly, we can always amend it, you know, six, eight inches. We can actually amend it to include the twelve hundred fifty-seven pages of the regulation.
I got you.
Okay.
So it's a little like that, that Supreme Court ruling that we read earlier, isn't it?
Head CPS.
One of the things I've noticed in here too is nowhere does it explicitly say that a mailbox has to be a permanent installation and that it can't be in a bucket of cement or something like that. Now I can see why, you know, if, for instance, if there's a problem where like there's construction going on and, you know, that's what you've done as a temporary measure, like stick it in a bucket of sand so you can still get mail delivery. That's one thing and that, that I think should, might or could possibly be okay if it was very, very limited time and temporary. But otherwise, there's really nothing in here that says that nobody can do that. So I think maybe that's something that we should look at, making sure that there's language in here that says that it's...
in here that says that it must be in a fixed location, it cannot be movable or mobile for ordinary usage.
I'll draft whatever you folks feel that the community's demanding. I, this was an attempt to try to get something in front of you folks quickly because it sounds like it's been brewing long before I showed up on the scene.
Oh, you have no idea.
So I'm more than happy to have it be whatever you folks feel reflects the, the community's desires. I just thought this had enough, what's the word? Had enough generalizations that Brady would have a lot of discretion available to him. And I think there might even be enough for him to decide, I think there's something in here about sole discretion of the city.